Hello and welcome to this city council meeting, City of Eureka, November 18th, 2025. We're glad you're all here. Thanks for being here. We will open this meeting with the land acknowledgement. The land that Eureka rests on is known in the Wiat language as Jerujiji. Passed actions by local, state, and federal governments remove the Wiat and other indigenous peoples from the land and threaten to destroy their cultural practices. The City of Eureka acknowledged the Wiat community, their elders both past and present, as well as future generations. This acknowledgement demonstrates the city's commitment to dismantle the ongoing legacies of settler colonialism. Could we have a roll call, please?
Councilmember Castellano?
Here.
Councilmember Moulton?
Here.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Here.
Councilmember Bauer?
Here.
Councilmember Contreras Saloche?
Here.
Mayor Bergel?
Here. And would all who care to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And City Attorney Black, do we have anything reported out of closed session?
Mayor, there was an action taken in closed session to add the following item to the closed session agenda, which is conference with legal counsel regarding existing litigation. The case name is Ecological Rights Foundation versus City of Eureka, United States District Court Number 22 CV 01459-JST. That was added pursuant to Government Code Section 54956.9D1. The motion to add that to the closed session agenda was made by Councilmember Bauer, seconded by Councilmember Fernandez, and passed 4 to 0 to 1, with Councilmember Moulton being absent at that time. And the matter was added on an urgency basis. That's it.
Thank you. Okay, this will move us to proclamations. Our first proclamation is for Transgender Day of Remembrance. If you'd like to come forward, welcome. Oh, hey Parker, I'm gonna read this to you first? Yeah, I'm so glad you're here. In recognition of Transgender Day of Remembrance, November 20th, 2025, whereas gender diverse people who are referred to using a range of evolving vocabulary, including Two-Spirit, transgender, gender nonconforming, and intersex, 2S/TGI, have existed throughout history and across cultures, including in the local Humboldt area where the Wiat tribe uses the term in Salutlook of "Gumi," which means "both together and." Whereas government entity recognize having numerous 2S/TGI staff, community partners, residents, and visitors, all of whom exist, contribute to a vibrant community and deserve to be treated with dignity and respect. And whereas nationally, there were over 500 anti-LGBTQ+ bills introduced in state legislatures across the country during the 2023 legislative year, over 533 anti-LGBTQ+ bills introduced in state legislatures across the nation in the 2024 legislative year, and already over 1,000 anti-LGBTQI+ bills filed across the nation in 2025 as of June, including six in California. And whereas the aforementioned anti-LGBTQ+ bills disproportionately target 2S/TGI people and include efforts to prohibit access to life-saving, gender-affirming medical care, prevent Two-Spirit, transgenders, youth from playing school sports alongside with their friends, erase 2S/TGI identities from vital records and state driver's license, ban books that include 2S/TGI people in history, prohibit 2S/TGI people from using restrooms and facilities in accordance with their gender identity, frame transgender people as inherently dishonorable, falsely conflate transgender women and girls with men, seek to harm women and girls, and criminalize 2S/TGI people who bravely embrace their authentic selves and rising hostility. And whereas in the May 2024 Humboldt County 2S-LGBTQIA+ School Climate Survey, taken by middle and high school students from across Humboldt County, the majority of gender diverse students report their mental health has been, as being negatively impacted by transgender legislation, anti-transgender legislation from across the country, not feeling safe at school, and avoiding school restrooms due to fears regarding their safety. And whereas in the above-mentioned survey, nearly one-third of 2S/TGI youth report living in fear of losing their housing due to being or seeming queer, with 10% reporting having been kicked out of their home in the prior year due to anti-queer bias. And whereas on June 4th, 2025, the Human Rights Watch published a sweeping report on anti-transgender healthcare bans, with the principal author, Yasmin Smolins, stating, "U.S. state bans on gender-affirming care violate fundamental rights, including the right to health, the rights of the child, the right to nondiscrimination, and the right to personal autonomy." And whereas Transgender Day of Remembrance was created in 1999 by transgender advocate Gwendolyn Anne Smith as a vigil to honor the memory of Rita Hester, a transgender woman who was killed in 1998. The vigil commemorated and honored all the transgender people lost to violence since Rita Hester's death, and began an important tradition that has become the annual Transgender Day of Remembrance. And whereas the City of Eureka will not tolerate violence, acts of hate, discrimination, bullying, or harassment of people who are 2S/TGI. And whereas in the City of Eureka, we believe in and reaffirm the inherent value of each and every resident, including our TSTGI communities, individuals, and families without exception. And therefore, be it resolved that the City of Eureka joins people across the country and around the world in acknowledging and honoring Transgender Day of Remembrance today, November 20th, 2025, and that the City of Eureka openly welcomes Two-Spirit, transgender, gender nonconforming, and intersex people as valuable members of its community. Now therefore, I, Mayor Kim Bergel, on behalf of the Eureka City Council, do hereby proclaim that November 20th, 2025, as Transgender Day of Remembrance, as we commemorate the lives tragically lost to bigotry and violence against trans people, we reaffirm our commitment to fighting for the safety, equality, and inclusion of our LGBTQ community. Here in Humboldt, we are sending a clear message that hate is never tolerated and that we will defend the freedom, equality, and dignity of all people, including and especially the Two-Spirited transgender community.
My name is Parker Vassal. I am a transgender and Two-Spirit artist here on behalf of Queer Humboldt. Recently, there have been over 1,000 anti-LGBTQ laws brought forward by elected officials across the country. According to the 2024 Humboldt County Youth Survey, around 75% of local queer youth report their mental health is negatively impacted by this onslaught of hate. What was once simply figuring out one's future has become figuring out how to survive, and it takes an amazing amount of courage to stand proud in the face of all that has happened and continues to happen. Having our local elected officials take action like you are taking today, demonstrating solidarity with the trans community is youth suicide prevention, and I applaud your acknowledgement of our community today. To honor those who have come before us is a crucial part of how we move forward. We have so much to learn from those who have trailblazed these pathways, we hold so much grief for those who we've lost, and we stand now on the foundations forged by generations of transgender diverse and intersex individuals from time immemorial, building upward and outward to create a brighter future for all. There are a number of upcoming events in honor of this, which can be found on Queer Humboldt's community events calendar, including a ritual put on by the Sisters of Perpetual Indulgence this Thursday, the 20th, at 11:15, and a trans adult potluck that evening. Thank you so much for your time and all of your support.
Thank you, Parker. Our next proclamation is Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week with Councilmember Castellano. And I believe, Nazee, are you here to pit that? Oh, someone else is. Come on up.
Thank you all. Oh, my mic's really alive. Thank you all for being here. This is the City of Eureka Proclamation in recognition of National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week, November 16th to 22nd, 2025. Whereas the theme of National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week 2025 is Housing is a Human Right and Food is a Human Right. And whereas people from all walks of life, including individuals, families with children, employed and unemployed workers, elderly residents, veterans, disabled individuals, and youth are impacted by hunger and homelessness. And whereas the community recognizes that hunger and homelessness continue to be a serious problem for many individuals and families living in Eureka, and no one should have to worry about whether they will have food on their plate or a roof over their head. And whereas 18.9% of the population is below the poverty rate, 16.7% face food insecurity, of 6,000 are children, 30,000 residents are enrolled in CalFresh, of whom 26% are children, and 80% of children qualify for free or reduced school meals. Most live on fixed incomes or survive paycheck to paycheck. Food for People distributed 2.6 million pounds of food, serving 21,000 individuals last year. And whereas while homelessness creates barriers to accessing essential services such as affordable housing, healthcare, childcare, and education, the cost of these necessities often contributes to hunger, food insecurity, and people experiencing homelessness on any given night. Whereas the aim is to eradicate homelessness by solving the root causes of it, to educate the public about the many reasons people are hungry and homeless, including the shortage of affordable housing for low-income residents, and to encourage support for the organizations committed to sheltering, providing support services, as well as meals, food supplies, clothing, and hygiene products to the homeless and the hungry. Now therefore, I, Leslie Castellano, on behalf of Mayor Kim Bergel and the Eureka City Council, do hereby proclaim that November 16th to 22nd, 2025, is National Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week, and encourage all people in the community to work together to find meaningful
Make sure this is working. Can you hear me? My name's Ashley Deal, and I'm the treasurer of Food for People, and we want to thank you for recognizing Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week. There's a clear link between hunger and homelessness, and both are linked to roots in poverty.
Is the mic on, Pam?
Yeah. There we go. Short people problems. Although 90% of those we serve are housed, many are living paycheck to paycheck. Our goal is to offer the food assistance people need so they don't have to choose between paying rent and putting food on the table. In our region, the need for hunger assistance is significant. Food for People serves 21,000 people in our county every month, nearly twice as many as we served five years ago. This has been challenging this year for food banks and people experiencing food insecurity. With federal cuts and disruptions to hunger relief programs, this work has gotten more challenging. Recently, we've just seen what it looks like when the food security safety net breaks down, and in the days following the announcements of delayed SNAP benefits, Food for People saw an immediate 40% increase in people seeking our assistance. Many of them were scared not knowing how they'd feed their family. While that emergency has passed, looking ahead, we anticipate an additional strain. Several policy changes will soon significantly change how supplemental nutrition assistant programs are administered and who is eligible. These shifts will place new burdens on states and communities and ultimately reduce access for many people who currently rely on food assistance. Here in Humboldt, thousands of residents could be affected, which will increase pressure on local food banks and other community organizations. When the larger safety net waivers, the impact is immediate at our local level. And it's not just impacting food bank, it's our partners and sectors from housing and senior services to domestic violence that are experiencing the cuts impacting the programs and the people they serve. The bright spot now is that our community has shown up for one another. We've seen grassroots efforts and neighbors helping neighbors. Our nonprofits are working together and leaning on each other for support. Humboldt County takes care of its own and gives us optimism as we confront the everyday reality of hunger. Thank you for your support.
I want to thank you too for acknowledging Hunger and Homelessness Awareness Week and for the proclamation. It's being accepted on behalf of all the people whose lives have touched hunger and homelessness, whether that's as a child hungry because you don't have food, or a neighbor of ours that lives in the bush because they don't have someplace else to go, or whether you're an individual and your own efforts trying to help people, or a member of a network, extensive network, as in the food bank, trying to reach people and get resources to them. So, on behalf of all the people that are suffering and are providing and are part of this whole thing, our members of community, all of us, thank you. And I also want to say that Ashley alluded to it, the changes that are coming down the pike for food resources are also coming down the pike for housing resources. And we know that federal cuts to the HUD monies are going to impact a lot of people. It's going to cut 50% off what we now receive for that, and it might impact even our goals for the RINAs numbers. We have in Eureka, what, 1,740 units that have to be built or arranged, and 919 of those are for low income, acutely low income, extremely low income, very low income, and low income. Those are the categories in the determination, you know, the regional needs assessment determination. We have a lot to deal with. And only 2% of the state's general fund goes towards housing. The state should really do more to incentivize and to help build housing, a variety of housing types, things that we need that can fill in the gap from the streets to affordable housing. We need social housing, we need cooperative housing. We should all really be sitting down and trying to figure out how we can do these things because in Humboldt County, for extremely low income, 85% of the people are paying half of their income for rent. They can't even come close to having an accessible home to be available to them. So rents are really high, our housing stock is unstable, we don't have enough, we have a lot of things to deal with. But we have alternatives, and it would be great to work with the state on how we can implement some of these alternatives here. I just think we are at a time where collaboration is probably more important than it's ever been. So a lot of the NGOs, the community-based organizations are working together, reach out and work with all of us, and let us help bring some humanity to our resolve to end hunger and homelessness here in Humboldt County and specifically Eureka.
Thank you. I wrote something down. This touches home really close to me, and it's really, this is, I like, what does this mean for us? Where do we go from here? What does this actually incur? Because like, at any point, at any time, we can all experience this. Can I have somebody else read this for me? Because it's like... Can I have you read that?
The timing for this proclamation ironically is pretty wild considering how we started this month scrambling to figure out how to keep a ton of people from starving without SNAP. That should be a major wake-up call. It was a glimpse of our future in the national government. It was a glimpse of our future if the national government follows through with their plan to cut things like housing and food stamps. Not only will a whole lot of people go hungry, but they're talking about cutting housing assistance for over 4 million people. Our homeless population could get over five times bigger than it is now. They are seriously scary times. These are seriously scary times. But seeing how many people came together to feed people gave me some hope. Maybe we can actually get through this if we stick together. So many regular people donated their money and time helping out. Now I need to challenge you, our elected leaders, to show the same level of commitment. Right at the top of this proclamation, it says loud and clear, "Housing is a human right, food is a human right." Honestly, those words ring hollow when you look at the policies that council has presented for unhoused residents. If housing is a human right, what about the right to just exist on the planet? The right to sleep, the right to empty our bladder and bowels as if it can't be helped, as if it can be helped? I've spent so many hours in these chambers along with hundreds of other people begging you to stop policies that make basic survival a criminal act. It kind of makes it look like you want us to die. You empower your police to constantly harass, cite, rob, and displace folks who are already struggling worse than anyone. We're on Wiat land, you start every meeting by acknowledging that. What right do you have to police people just trying to survive on this land? I hope you find some integrity between your policies and the words printed here. Let this proclamation be more than just a symbol, let it be reflected in your policies.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you. Okay, it's the evening of proclamations. Our next proclamation is for the Great American Smokeout Proclamation. Do we have someone here to come on up? Welcome. Oh, and Councilmember Bauer has that.
All right. In recognition of the Great American Smokeout, November 20th, 2025. Whereas the American Cancer Society encourages all tobacco users to join the Great American Smokeout and quit tobacco for at least one day. And whereas each year, nearly 40,000 California adults die from smoking, and thousands of kids become new daily smokers. And whereas vaping electronic cigarettes has made smoking more attractive to youth and harder to quit. And whereas electronic cigarettes create hazardous waste in the form of plastics, semiconductors, heavy metals, and lithium-ion batteries for which there is no established disposal or recovery procedure. And whereas 16% of 7th graders in Eureka have tried electronic cigarettes, and 24% of 9th graders, 20% of 11th graders, and 61% of students in non-traditional high schools report lifetime use. And whereas there are many resources to help people quit using nicotine, including Kick It California and a special program that youth can access through their schools called vivape.org. Now therefore, be it proclaimed that the City Council of Eureka, California hereby recognizes and supports the American Cancer Society's Great American Smokeout on Thursday, November 20th, 2025, and encourages all residents who use tobacco products to consider that they do not have to stop smoking in one day, just start with one day.
Hello. We are representing Friday Night Live and the Tobacco-Informed Dynamic Ensemble Youth Organization. We would like to first begin by thanking the Eureka City Council for acknowledging the importance of addressing today's tobaccos, or addressing commercial tobacco's impact on youth health and for declaring this proclamation. We have some concerns regarding the lack of limits placed on commercial tobacco in our community. It has come to our attention that while the laws have been passed in order to prohibit the selling of any nicotine or tobacco products near schools, measures have not been put in place to protect establishments that are not classified as schools. However, these youth-oriented facilities are still responsible for children for a large portion of the day. Having a tobacco shop adjacent to places with kids such as residential areas or youth organization, parks, or libraries can be extremely harmful. These big tobacco companies purposely target our youth, and as a result, tobacco retailers be, a result of tobacco retailers being located near homes, schools, and youth establishments, people's health suffers. Data shows that youth are proven to be more likely to experiment with smoking due to the proximity to these retailers. Tobacco youth rates are affected by where tobacco retailers are located and how many retailers there are in a given area.
When tobacco retailers are located near homes and schools, the health of nearby people suffers, and youth are much more likely to experiment with the smoking. The availability of these tobacco places near where kids are leads them to be more likely to experiment. Tobacco use rates are affected by where tobacco retailers are located and how concentrated and dense they are in a given area. Studies have consistently shown that children are more likely to smoke when they live or go to school in neighborhoods with a high density of tobacco retailers. One study found that 22% of daily smokers made unplanned cigarette purchases, and that the sales displays influenced nearly four times as many unplanned purchases as they did planned purchases. Restrictions that decrease tobacco retailer density make tobacco products less available and decrease exposure to tobacco advertising, both of which are likely to improve public health. In Eureka alone, there are around 30 tobacco retail stores. There are two McDonald's, and nearly every person has had some form of McDonald's meal. So the amount of people that have probably also even just seen smoking or done it themselves is like really big. My younger cousins were exposed to drugs from birth and were continuously supplied and exposed to tobacco throughout their lives. I've gone from seeing them at every single family gathering to not speaking them or seeing them, period. They've been hospitalized and institutionalized because of overconsumption and being laced. Neither of them are in high school yet. If it weren't for how widely available tobacco is to young people, they wouldn't have been able to access these drugs. They would still be going to Easter and Thanksgiving and going out to have fun like normal kids. But instead, they're lashing out and following into the bottomless rabbit hole of drugs.
Given consistent research findings, the number of tobacco retailers near schools correlates with increased smoking rates. And I would like to remind our city council that we are not just a statistic, we are the kids that you see every day, the people that you pass on the street, your grandkids or children, or people that you know, people in our community. A common reduction strategy is limiting the proximity of tobacco retailers to youth-oriented facilities. These tobacco retailers locate near schools and produce high smoking rates that have been shown to lower their cigarette prices and have more in-store promotions in order to target our youth. Studies have shown that the point-of-sale tobacco advertising could be limited by creating, for example, a thousand-foot buffer between these retailers and schools. However, we want to remind city council that these schools are not the only places that children are at during their day. They are at parks and libraries and places like Boys and Girls Club that are extremely important for their development, mental health, and a ton of other things. In California Sierra region, the City of Bishop adopted a zoning restriction in 2016 that prohibited tobacco retailers from locating 1,000 feet from primary or secondary schools. However, a large problem with this is the fact that... feet from primary or secondary schools. However, a large problem with this is the fact that this could have unintended consequences. We believe that it would be advantageous to combine these proposed restrictions with others, such as placing a cap on the amount of retailers in a region to present, to pre, to prevent the effects of tobacco retailers from locating in different areas and creating an extremely high density of their tobacco locations. Thank you.
Thank you. So great to see so much of our youth out here tonight. That's awesome. So our next proclamation is the National Hospice and Palliative Care Month proclamation. And Councilmember Fernandez will read that one. Come on up. Welcome.
City of Eureka proclamation in recognition of National Hospice and Palliative Care Month. Whereas Hospice of Humboldt has been dedicated to serving those facing terminal illness along with their families since 1979. Through compassionate, patient-centered care, individuals can live with peace and dignity whether in their own homes or at the Ida Emerson Hospice House surrounded by loved ones. And whereas the essence of hospice and palliative care is meeting patients and families where they are, providing comfort at home and reassurance that choosing hospice or palliative care preserves hope and the quality of life. These services provide the full scope of physical, emotional, and spiritual needs. Hospice of Humboldt's home-based palliative care program sets its apart from other providers by offering high-quality, compassionate care tailored to patients' needs within their own homes. And whereas Hospice of Humboldt recognizes the growing need for palliative and hospice services in our rural community and remains committed to expanding its programs, ensuring that more individuals and families across Humboldt County can access the care and support they deserve. And whereas Hospice of Humboldt is now fully utilizing the Ida Emerson Hospice House, expanding access to compassionate care so that families in Humboldt County and beyond can provide dignity, comfort, and support during life's most challenging moments. And whereas Hospice of Humboldt envisions a compassionate community where no one dies alone or in fear, and where all who grieve find comfort, the organization encourages everyone to engage in open conversations with their families, loved ones, and healthcare providers about the end of their life wishes. Now therefore, I, Mario Fernandez, on may, on behalf of Mayor Kim Burgele and the Eureka City Council, do hereby proclaim November 2025 as National Hospice and Palliative Care Month. The council extends its heartfelt thanks to Hospice of Humboldt for its vital role in raising awareness of hospice and palliative care and for providing these invaluable services to our community.
Good evening, Mayor Burgele, members of the council, staff, and members of the community. It's my big, great honor tonight as Laura Middlemiss here representing on behalf of Hospice of Humboldt and all the amazing staff and volunteers. And to thank you for extending this proclamation and acknowledgement to us. I'm here tonight with my fellow board member Sabrina Delashmit. And we will just take a brief moment to read a few highlights of what has been achieved thus far in 2025 by Hospice of Humboldt. These notes were provided to me by a real key member of Hospice of Humboldt, which is Tia Bartel, who is our Development Director. We were recognized this year with a five-star Medicare rating, the highest possible level of quality honoring our outstanding care, communication, and family support. This places us in the top ten percent. We are fully utilizing the Ida Emerson House, as was referenced in the proclamation. As of July, all twelve private rooms are now allowing us to serve twice as many patients and families in need of comfort and peace. And preparing for the next big step by expanding our home-based palliative care program to reach even more individuals living with serious illness at home. Our hospice thrift store in Arcata continues to thrive, generating essential funds for patient care and creating a welcoming place for volunteers and community members to come and make a difference. And lastly, but most importantly, every day, we serve nearly two hundred patients and countless loved ones, ensuring compassionate care, dignity, peace of mind for people throughout Humboldt County. As we recognize National Hospice and Palliative Care Month, Hospice of Humboldt celebrates the compassion of teamwork and community support that make this care possible. Together, we are ensuring that every person in Humboldt County has access to comfort, dignity, and peace when it matters most. Thank you again for this acknowledgement.
Thank you for all you do. Okay, our final proclamation of the evening is Native American Heritage Month with Councilmember Contreras Deloche.
Whereas Native Americans are a diverse group of indigenous people native to the continent of North America with a rich cultural heritage, archaeological evidence suggests people have lived in the Americas for at least twenty-three thousand years, with many indigenous groups believing their ancestors to have lived on the land from time immemorial. And whereas there are over five hundred and seventy federally recognized tribes in the U.S., each with distinct languages, cultures, and housing traditions. And whereas Native American Heritage Month was established in 1990 when President George H.W. Bush approved a joint resolution designating November as National American Indian Heritage Month. During November, we show appreciation and acknowledgement for the unique contributions made by the First Americans for the growth and establishment of the United States. And whereas November is the time to rejoice in the Native American cultures, histories, and tr, traditions, and to appreciate the great contributions of the Native Americans that are indelible in our lives. Though, or excuse me, through awareness, we not only celebrate Native Americans, but also educate people about the various challenges faced by Native Americans in the past and today. And whereas the terms Native American, American Indian, and Indigenous have different meanings and levels of acceptance, it is important to respect how individual and groups choose to identify. Now therefore, I, Renee Contreras Deloche, on behalf of Mayor Kim Burgele and the City of Eureka, Eureka City Council, hereby declare November 2025 as Native American Heritage Month and encourage the community to observe, recognize, celebrate, and learn about the history of Native Americans.
Thank you. And I just have a few mayor's announcements. I just wanted to let you all know that, let's see, tomorrow night, there's a conservation lecture, Wildlife and Wine with Matt Johnson at Sequoia Park Zoo. If you've never been to one, those are really amazing. Dick Taylor Chocolates is having their tree lighting December 3rd. So if you're looking for something to do, it's at six o'clock. The lighting is going to be at six fifteen. The Santi, Santi, Salty Santa Parade is happening December 6th, eleven o'clock down on the boardwalk. And Henderson Center is having their open house November 20th, five to eight. And there's a vintage holiday boutique at the Annie B. Ryan, Thousand F Street on the 13th and 14th from, what is that? I think it's noon to seven. So if you're looking for something fun to do, there's always something to do in our city. I hope you get out and enjoy our community. And with that, we have a presentation. Okay, thank you. So we will be postponing that proclamation. Great, thank you. All right, this moves us to public comment. This is the time for members of the public who wish to be heard on matters that do not appear on the agenda. City council policy is to limit each speaker to three minutes. Such time allotment or portion thereof shall not be transferred to other speakers. Pursuant to the Brown Act, the city council may not take action on an item that does not appear on the agenda. Is there anyone here this evening that? Well, hello.
Good evening. It's been a while. Had a lot to talk about, but I'm just gonna keep it short. On the first thing, I'm gonna jump right into the main thing. And I wanted to thank you for not dead naming me tonight. Thanks, since you're now a sanctuary city. I guess you have to do that. Anyway, we'll get to that. I was gonna speak on the nonsense, like you know, the unaccounted-for money off 2030 Park, or the craziness of the bicycle boulevards, or, or the insanity of banning nitrous oxide while promoting the use of methamphetamine and fatty by handing out needles and heroin-cooked kits and meth-smoking kits. And, you know, it's just like, just total insanity. The world is looking at Eureka and going, what the hell? Anyway, so I noticed all the proclamations, and I was wondering, where's mine? You know, two and a half years ago, I came out of the closet as my true self and was immediately called inappropriate by the mayor. The local news blog did a hit piece on me, called me obscene. I received vitriolic comments, hatred, death threats from members of the Corte community, all because I came out of the closet as who I truly am. Now that this is a sanctuary city, I believe it's incumbent upon you to actually respect my identity. And with that being said, may I remind you? It's the Buck Porker, you putzes. Now, do I get my day in proclamation?
Is there anyone else in chambers here to speak? Welcome.
Education is important. I came here to say things that I've said to you all many times here. Now that we're back in the winter months, I think I just need to come back and say it again. It's traumatizing to work with the people living outside. And that doesn't even like come close to the trauma that the people outside are experiencing. We're tired of our friends dying in ways that are so preventable. And a, a lot of it just comes down to like the basic necessities, right? When it comes to housing, we know we just need more housing. But what about in the meantime? In the meantime, the least you could do is just stop taking away people's survival gear. Stop taking their vehicles. Stop taking their tents and tarps and any kind of shelter that people can get their hands on is taken away from them over and over and over again. Can you imagine being out there in these storms with nothing at all? Oftentimes, not even a jacket. The people that you employ, those officers are out there doing this all day, every day, like they have nothing better to do. Please, please put a stop to that. Please. It will save lives. Every year, we lose people out there. It will save lives if you just stop doing something, if you just leave people alone until there's a place for them to be. Thank you.
Hello.
I got to say one, one extra thing, though. Like, talking about, it is the winter season and what people don't know is what goes behind the scenes. I'll say one thing and leave it at this. There is people out here that are begging to get clean and get off the needle. And we do provide that. We got resources now that we didn't have. We were invited to, the recovery happens because we know there's the need that people have to reach out somewhere. And they're getting the dignity and they're getting their, the resources a little bit more quicker than before because of the facts is there are people that are not trying to live continuously in this cold, in this kind of way, or in any kind of way. But there are facts that happen with our medical system when, when you get cleaned that your body starts falling apart because you use drugs for so long. So there's like, not everybody out here on the street are doing needles or drugs. Some are just trying to just live and they're... Thank you.
Thank you. I just want to reiterate what Jammy just said. We have services for the showers and hygiene, clothing, food, all of that, under the bridge on every other Tuesday or thereabouts. We have eighty-five people who come to us and come through our services each time we do that. That's a lot of people. It's a lot of support. And there are multiple people each time we do that that say, isn't there just a place I can go? I can't do this. I can't be outside. Isn't there a place I can go? And they real, there is really is no place for, for people to go. If people have been active drug users and they aren't at the moment, if it's in their system, they test for it, they can't go. There's just got to be some place that we can assist people to be in place and live through the trauma because they will get through it with support. And that doesn't mean they won't go through it again or whatever. But we are still losing multiple people each month. And it's really a very sad thing to have to see people and then have them be gone. And it happens to us all the time. We've seen sixteen thousand people with our services in five years. And we've provided seven thousand showers. That's an amazing amount of service. But the reality is, is that a lot of those people are no longer with us. Anyway, please make space.
Thank you. Is there anyone else in chambers that would like to comment at this time? Come on up.
Is that better?
Good evening. Here again. Our senior IT analyst used his work phone to covertly record me in my bedroom. I told police I did not consent to be filmed in the videos he sent me, but it's not a terminable offense. He showed me his handiwork weeks later to praise his boyfriend beside me as if I wore a lamp fashioned to resemble a recognizable nude person and informed me he couldn't delete anything his boyfriend was in. I were baffled as to why. I felt entitled to bodily autonomy. Cut off contact when I refused to apologize for describing his actions in plain word. Once APD found him, no phone to his name, using taxpayer-funded equipment to shoot porn. Naturally, they informed police I'm on meds for my mental illness. Oh no, my ADHD is medicated. Autism has no cure. They should be terrified. You broadcasted his June 3 reinstatement before the police file was available. I handed him the phone back to carry on overseeing himself and the city's surveillance infrastructure. He told police that he tried to accommodate my wishes as if he sincerely believed it was fully within his rights to film whatever the hell he wanted and argue later as to why he should keep it. Like, if you can keep someone's nude body in your brain, you don't need permission to keep it on your work phone or in the cloud. Isn't Google like a digital extension of your brain? Great question. He exported my body as files before I knew they existed to an unaccountable third party. That's a lifelong loss of agency it took by making it my active duty to stop him. Filming someone unclothed or during intimacy against their consent is sexual violence, even if they didn't notice and stop you, even if you eventually delete it a year later, even if you chanted nudity isn't sexual as you did it. You did not fall out of a coconut tree. We live in a society where cisgender men's bodies are neutral. The rest of us learned as children that ours never get to be neutral. Being sexualized or objectified isn't actually as fun as it looks without the power to choose it. All we have is the right to our own privacy. Most entitled men choose to take it from us because they know they have impunity. Four weeks ago, your employee sent his boyfriend here to announce they are too ashamed to be in the front lawn of one of the homes they own and are seeking a restraining order. But no matter how hard I could try, I'd never get any service around here because you know what would go into discovery. You have survivor advocacy partners to prevent future harm and liability with non-carceral restorative justice. You choose to outsource your policy enforcement to a threat of public spectacle. Leave us with nothing but archaic criminal statutes and baseless proclamations of intolerance to transgender discrimination. In no way can you defend our dignity and freedom while you tolerate sexual crimes carried out by your IT analyst using your equipment.
I see no one on Zoom. I see no one on Zoom. I'm sorry, there is nobody on Zoom. We are going to close public comment and bring it to council reports and we're going to start with council member Contreras Deloche.
Thank you, Mayor. So over the last couple of weeks, I, I met with members of Free Meal. I also got to meet with Brian from Eureka Rescue Mission. I got to attend the Food for People event down at College of the Redwoods. We had a huge number of volunteers that showed up for that, which was great because I think we had something like, I don't know if it was eight hundred families or if it was eight hundred vehicles. It was a lot and a lot of people going through very quickly. I also wanted to just put a little special shout out to CSAT who also showed up and helped direct all the traffic because we did end up having quite a few cars. Turned out really great. Lots of donations from the community, a lot of food and lots of people coming through. So it was great to see the way the community turned out. I had a little girl next to me that took a day off school so she could come and help load. And so it was just really nice. And then I got to do a, my third ride along with Humboldt Bay Fire. I got to drive the back thingy that I can't remember what it's called. So it's the second, what is it? The tiller, that's right. It's something that didn't make sense to me and I did okay at first and then I got a little intimidated. I was in a parking lot. We were safe. We were fine. We were out in the middle of nowhere. Okay. And then I got to go to Housing Forum that AHA had put on this past weekend at the Labor Temple. Also got to go to our downtown holiday event that was in Old Town Eureka on the fourteenth. That was really great. HBF was having a toy drive at the same time, so I got to start my Christmas shopping. Board of Supervisors, two by two. And then I got to go to, so IHI and BLBS, so it's Indigenous Housing Initiative. And that's Lisa Sundberg and the BLBS is Franklin. Richards and I think Lisa's from Trinidad Rancheria and then Franklin is from the Hoopa Tribe. They coordinated, we just had on Bay Street, so it's actually council member Bowers Ward. There is a new house that they just built and it's the first of its kind and fully sustainable and is a work of art. I hadn't seen anything like it, so they used new materials called hempcrete and they assembled part of it in their big facility up there in Hoopa and then they brought the panels here. The house is breathable, it's kind of insulates itself, the walls are about ten inches thick. It's pretty incredible. We don't have anything like it and it's, it's remarkable just kind of what can be done. And when I say fully sustainable, it's got solar panels and a battery, so it should never really have to, you know, draw on city utilities or PG&E utilities. I wanted to just give a quick shout out to Brendan Riley because we had, when they were there, they brought up multiple times. It was mentioned during their ribbon cutting how fantastic he was to work with and how great it was because this was like new materials and they were kind of inventing the wheel on this and that he was great to work with, super helpful. And that was something that was repeated by three different people, so they must have really meant it. That's my report.
Thank you. Councilmember Bauer.
Thank you, Mayor. I attended the State of the Nonprofit Sector Meeting. Councilmember Castellano gave a great speech. Good, it was trying to bring some levity to a pretty serious situation. You know, our nonprofits are struggling as they try to help all those people that are affected by so much of these federal cuts out there. And it was really good to see just how many nonprofits we have and a friend of mine said there's one nonprofit for every three people in Humboldt County and it's kind of true. Like we are a, a community dedicated to helping one another and it was a tough, you know, presentation to watch just seeing how much need is out there. So if you, if you have a chance to, you know, help give to a nonprofit, please do, especially during the holiday season. I attended the Veterans Day Celebration. I want to thank Southwest Eureka Rotary and the City of Eureka for putting on a really great event. Lot of people turned out. Bill Gillespie, the president of Southwest Eureka, did a great job of emceeing and it was pretty, pretty interesting. There was only one World War II vet, you know, kind of they're, they're kind of, not, not many left. It was really cool to see, see him be honored and all, all our veterans be honored. It was really a pretty cool day. I attended the Redwood Coast Mountain Bike Association Bog Stomp Race, which had like two hundred people. I just want to thank the bike community because they do a lot for public access, building trails and, and they're a fun bunch to hang out with. So if you get a chance to go to a bike race, not bike race, do it. I attended Cal City's League Leaders Meeting, kind of just getting prepped for upcoming travel that we'll have in the next couple of weeks. And I attended Old Town Open House. I want to tell people too to use the Vibe app. I think it's, that's the app, it's Vibe. When you're in Old Town and you're shopping or just hanging out, get on the app and it really is, helps people see kind of what's going on, you know, how we're interacting with our businesses. So please download and use it while you're down there this, this holiday season. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Fernandez.
Thank you. I attended the Humboldt Transit Authority Monthly Meeting on behalf of Councilmember Costellano. Say probably about three quarters of the business took place in closed session, so not a lot I can report out of that. This last weekend, I attended the AHA Housing Forum, which seemed to quickly turn into a Q and A for myself and Councilmember Contreras Deloche who'd also attended. Wasn't bad, just impromptu and otherwise good folks there with a lot of good intentions going on and some ideas. Having upcoming ride, ride along scheduled with Humboldt Bay Fire for this Thursday. And then much like the mayor, just wanted to remind folks about the Henderson Center Holiday Open House this Thursday from five to eight.
Thank you. Councilmember Moulton?
Thank you, Mayor. I have no travel to report. I did attend the Norcan League of Women Voters State of Nonprofits forums, very interesting. One of the things that I was aware of but was really brought to light is how when nonprofits are businesses, they have employees, those employees shop here. And when they lose funding, the entire economy around here suffers. And so if somebody doesn't have money from SNAP for food, then they're going to spend other money on food and not spend that money somewhere else. So the knock on effects of the hundreds of nonprofits that are going to be losing funding is going to have a serious impact on every single business in the county. And I think, so yeah, donations are excellent. I think shopping local is excellent. I think just, it was very encouraging to see how people band together to support one another, whether it's trading administrative tasks or helping each other find alternative funding or even just emotional support. It was a really tight knit group in there and it's really, really good to see. There's, it's like, it's a couple of hundred nonprofits, but then if you look at subprojects under like the Ink People or under RCAA, you're looking at like whole sectors, all, all wrapped under one roof. It's, it's, it's pretty significant. But it was good. It was very encouraging, even though just to, to have an honest conversation about what's really going on, but to see how much people are there to support one another. The JPA Humboldt Bay Fire Board Meeting was canceled due to lack of agenda items. I'm currently working to try and find advocates for underserved groups to meet with the Citizens' Oversight on Police Practices Board. I've heard a couple of people talking specifically about people experiencing homelessness, also experiencing abuses or malpractice at the hands of the EPD and I would love to talk to you. Please email me. My email is on the city website. I'd like to, to talk about that with somebody who has firsthand experience or secondhand experience with that. And then I'm working with the Planning Department and City Manager to put together a town hall on, on housing development. This is going to be specifically about like infill development and density. That's going to be Monday, December the eighth. We'll be putting out some press about that, but people have concerns about what's being, you know, you have an empty lot next to your house that's been there for thirty years. Somebody bought it, they're going to build something there. People have questions, concerns. There's things that the city is trying to do to increase the number of housing, increase the amount of housing that is available and at the same time, put rules in place that maintain the things about Eureka that we all love. So if you're concerned about that or you have questions about that, Monday, December the eighth, that is housing, what are we calling it? What's the name of it?
I'd have to look that up.
Yeah, I'd have to look it up.
But it is, it is in council chambers at five thirty.
Thank you. It'll be here in the council chambers at five thirty. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Costellano.
Thank you. I attended the Redwood Region Rise Economic Development Meeting in Lake County and represented the art, culture and tourism sector. I was honored to be invited to give some closing remarks at the Norcan, Northern California Association of Nonprofits and League of Women Voters nonprofit forum, which it's great to see other council members there. I attended the Family Resource Center, kind of convening and round table and participated in a round table there. Want to congratulate Old Town Business Owners on the kind of the Holiday Open House and thanks to Eureka Main Street and our Economic Development Department for supporting that and just let folks know that this Thursday is the Henderson Center Open House from five to eight PM. So go down and check that out. It's a great season anytime to shop local. And then also it's probably early to start thinking about this, but Brian Olson down at St. Vincent de Paul, who, who does the community outreach program there is hosting a, a Christmas movie mixer and gift drive on Wednesday, December seventeenth. At the Minor Theater collecting holiday gifts. I got, I've got some flyers here. I'll put them by the table out front. And that's good for now.
I just wanted, it's the Town Hall on December eighth is Residential Regulation, New Development and Neighborhood Compatibility.
Pithy.
Easy to forget.
Thank you. And so for my report, let's see, I went to the Pack Out Green Team Clean Up, Green Team Cleanup on Herrick, which is always a great time. I met with Assemblyman Chris Rogers. I too went to the Southwest Rotary Veterans Day and, you know, I love living in a small town because Mr. Stoddard was the, the World War II veteran. He was also a veteran from Korea and his wife was also my first grade teacher at Washington Elementary, like a thousand years ago. Yeah, it was really, it's always so great to see him and that's always really a great ceremony. I attended, actually I was the master of ceremonies for Trivia Follies for Redwood Coast Monastery and I just, I, these kids are getting ready to go to the Model Monastery United Nations and both of my kids went, they're representing Cape Verde, Poland and Bangladesh, but I just have to share their topics because this just blows my mind. They're going to be talking about writing position papers for Human Rights Council, the Economic and Social Council and the World Health, World Health Organization Committees. Their topics range from migrant and refugee rights to the advancement of women to human rights and climate, to human genome and editing among others. And this was a fundraiser to get them back to New York and they will also be going to Washington DC and it's just such a gift for them to be able to do that and for me to continue to be a part of that school that I love so much. I attended the Veterans Day Run for the veterans. There were a lot of police officers out there running past me at lightning speed. And I got to walk with two people that are really special to me. One is my favorite hero from Veterans for Peace, Johnny Colkins, and the other, my favorite Monastery mama, Terry Roman Little. So it was just wonderful to be able to spend some good quality time with them. I attended and was part of Murder at the Clock Tower, which was a fundraiser for North Coast Repertory Theater. That's always a classic fun time. You know, I attended the Salvation Army Red Kettle Kickoff. They'll be, you know, ringing the bell soon enough and was told at that meeting that eighty-three cents from each dollar from those kettles goes to community. So that was interesting. I went and decorated with garlands in Old Town, didn't get to climb the ladder, but I did show up. And I also walked the Ruby Bridges Walk with the students from Zane, Zane Middle School. And I want to thank Eureka Police Department who showed up and managed the traffic for that. It's just such a great event for our kids to get involved and to understand the meaning behind the way things are changing and their part in that. So, you know, every time I do my, my reports and I'm sure you guys feel the same way, I feel like I'm not doing anything and then you read it, it's like, oh, there's a lot going on in our city. So with that, I'm done with that and we're going to move on to public hearings.
Good evening. The title of tonight's public hearing is the Transit Needs Assessment. This is a relatively short presentation. The purpose of this public hearing is to ultimately get input from the public regarding our transportation system or our bus system. This is an annual process. It involves giving the public an opportunity to give their input through the public hearing process. All of the input that we receive tonight will go to HCOG or the Humboldt County Association of Governments. HCOG determines if the public input meets the definition of unmet transit need and if it's reasonable to meet. So the recommendation for tonight is open the public hearing for public input regarding unmet transit needs and direct staff to forward all comments to HCOG.
Thank you. Are there any questions for Director Millar? Seeing no one, we'll open up this public hearing. Is there anyone in chambers who's here to comment on this item? Seeing none, do you see anyone on Zoom?
I see no one on Zoom.
Okay. So we will close this public hearing and bring it back to council for a motion and a vote. And any comments you may have. Councilmember Costellano.
Thank you for this. I'm sure, I know there's going to be a lot more outreach for, you know, different opportunities for members of the public to speak. Just to say, I was meeting with a City of Eureka business owner who, who has a venue in a historic hotel in Old Town recently and she was speaking to the need for more public transportation at night that would kind of support people who want to attend Eureka venues that maybe, you know, want to be responsible but don't live in Eureka and just the need to increase transportation access so that, in order to kind of help Old Town businesses thrive on weeknights or weekend nights.
Thank you. So a motion would be great. Councilmember Moulton?
I move, we take that and everything else we heard and send it to HCOG.
Second.
Great. So we have a motion in a second, please vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
This moves us to the Consent Calendar. All matters listed under this category are considered to be routine by the City Council and will be enacted by one motion pursuant to City Council Resolution 2011-222. If a member of the public...
if a member of the public would like an item on the consent calendar pulled and discussed separately, the request should be made to a councilperson prior to the meeting. Unless a specific request is made by a council member, the consent calendar will not be read. There will be no separate discussion of these items. So my understanding is that we will be pulling G3 and G4. Can we get a motion to accept the ballot?
So moved.
Second.
Please vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. This brings us to the Food Assistance and Funding Agreements, City Manager Slattery.
Thank you, Mayor, and good evening, Mayor and Council. This item here was requested at last meeting's section under Future Agenda Items. The reason for this partially was brought forward was because of the concern of the SNAP benefits going away. In between that time and now, the SNAP benefits were reinstated. But as stated by the Food for People Representative, but the other issues that are pending that could be coming to people who provide food for our community were still pending. So the original request was for $30,000. $15,000 coming from the participatory budget and the other 15 coming from the general fund. Based on the SNAP benefits being reinstated, but still having other issues, staff is recommending using the participatory budgeting to help provide funding for those local organizations that main purpose is to provide food. I should explain that the money that was set aside for this as a part of that future agenda was intended for organizations whose primary purpose is to provide food for the Eureka community, which would be the Food for People, as well as the dining facility of St. Vincent de Paul. And so right now, staff is recommending that $15,000 be put aside for funding agreements for $7,500 each for Food for People and the St. Vinnie's Dining Facility. And that's what staff's recommending. Staff is available for any questions.
Questions? Councilmember Castellano?
It's more of an opinion, but I'll frame it as a question. You know, and thank you for, you know, bringing this forward so quickly. And, you know, I do realize that, for now, SNAP benefits have been reinstated and which, you know, we're all very thankful for. You know, and of course, there are many, as we mentioned earlier, many uncertain uncertainties. In terms of the city budget, you know, we know that this $15,000 from participatory budgeting is here. Would another, you know, $5,000 to $10,000 additional kind of threaten our city budget?
I definitely wouldn't say it would threaten the city budget. I think that depending on how much more is allocated, there may be a need to come back and say, hey, is this enough? But I don't think $5,000 to $10,000 would trigger that need.
Councilmember Bauer? No?
Well, yeah, I guess I'll weigh in. I think there's an opportunity here to explore partnership with the county. I mean, I think they're kind of, you know, have the biggest, I want to say purse strings, but, you know.
Question?
No, I'm responding to the request for additional money. I think it's fine. I just would like to see, like to understand what the county's doing as well, for, you know, for this issue.
So staff did speak with the county about the SNAP benefits, and that's where we got our information about them being reinstated. As far as other funding that goes towards this, I mean, they have lots of different dedicated funding that goes to programs similar to this, but not necessarily to supplement their SNAP benefits. I am not aware of anything the county is to do to take some of their general fund monies to help supplement that. I haven't heard anything from their CAO or any of their staff, or DHHS staff, that they have any plans on bringing something to the board for additional funding for these type of programs.
Councilmember Contreras Deloach?
Was the, you, I, we had talked about this, but the reason for these two and not including the Eureka Rescue Mission in this was because these two facilities focus purely on providing food. Was that right?
Correct. Yeah, there was, their main purpose is for providing food for the Eureka community while those other agencies do, you know, Betty Chin, Rescue Mission, Supon, other folks do too. But this is their main mission in Eureka.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll open this item up for public comment. Is there anyone in the public, in chambers, that would like to comment on this item? Come on up, welcome.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Bob Santilli. I'm a volunteer at St. Vincent de Paul. And news of this consideration was brought to our attention last week and very much welcome news. Majority of the nonprofit industry is small budget. And it's a challenging precarious year-to-year existence because funding streams can dry up overnight. And we've pretty much seen a decline in funding over the, I'd say, the last eight years or so, primarily in the grant funding world. And there's more initiatives out there now pulling for the same dollars. Foundations have been cutting back on their financial positions. And it's somewhat the historical nature of the industry. But it's good to recognize that the City of Eureka has always supported us on various fronts, from administratively with Manager Slattery and Mayor Begel and to the onsite presence at our free mail facility from Councilmember Castellano and Mayor Begel. We're very blessed by that. CSAT, Uplift. The city has continued to partner with us and help us stay afloat. And I look at it, by the grace of God, the financial side seems to pull us through in various ways that are not anticipated each year. And that's how I view the future, that we're looking at non-traditional funding measures down the road. And we'll see what happens. But it's very much a blessing that yourselves are considering this measure for us. And just, it's further evidence of the longstanding support of the city. And we're grateful for that, and God bless you all.
I just want to say Bob is a heck of a lot more than just a volunteer for St. Vinnie's.
Hundred percent agreed. Hundred percent agreed. Okay, is there anyone else in chambers that would like to comment on this item? Seeing no one, we'll bring it over to Zoom.
I see no one on Zoom.
Okay, so with that, we'll close the public comment and bring it back to council for a motion and a vote. Councilmember Castellano, your finger going towards the button.
Pregnant pause. Thank you again for bringing this forward. You know, I would, you know, I know the immediate crisis is alleviated. And also, from being in conversation with many nonprofits, I know that it's also ongoing at the same time. So I do think this is a good opportunity to, you know, do what we can to support food security in Eureka. And I recognize that, you know, other communities should and could, or other governments should and could kind of also step up. And I think that often, the City of Eureka paves the way. And perhaps this creates a challenge or invitation for other communities to also, or governments or organizations to do the same. I would like to see us, gosh, I don't know. I feel like, to me, a minimum of $10,000 to each of the organizations in question seems, you know, meaningful. But I would be curious to hear from other council members in terms of their sense of what we should allocate.
So could we get a motion in a second, and then we'll discuss it further?
I just wanted clarification, so it would be...
Excuse me, Councilmember Fernandez, can we get a motion in a second before we carry on with the conversation?
Yeah, because it sounded like maybe an additional 2,500 each? Or is it 10,000 total? That's what I was trying to figure out.
Oh, sorry, 10,000 each minimum.
If you make that motion, I'll second.
Okay, well, that's my minimum. I'll say 15,000 each.
That doubles it, combined with that.
To authorize the city manager to execute two funding agreements with Food for People and St. Vincent de Paul for the purpose of food assistance and the amount of $15,000 for each organization.
Second.
Okay, discussion?
Yeah, and then corollary to that. So then this would be increasing it from currently on here from 7,500 each to 15,000 each, correct? And so then, city manager, I know we had questions, but then it'd be asking for these additional funds. Where might we be looking to that for those additional funds?
We'd have to look at it, but I, previously, I said whether it's five or 10, I don't think 15 is going to have that, you know, critical effect on our budget or anything. We will likely be able to find that through some budget. I don't have it in front of me to tell you where it's going to come from, but we can manage that.
Anything further?
Just trying to think of, I understand the sentiment there about wanting to encourage and foment, you know, the likeness of these donations. I'm just wondering if there's any capacity for us to ask for a match from, insert, yeah, that's what I'm trying to figure out, who would it be?
I'm not aware...
Like, dear internet, please, match these ones.
I'm not aware of a program from another government agency that offers matches for something like this, but I can definitely bring this up in our city manager meetings and our CAO meetings and let them know that our council was generous enough in order to recognize the issue and try and do our best to help.
Okay, Councilmember Bauer, then Moulton. You just, okay, Councilmember Moulton.
I think we just need to challenge them. I, I challenge. I declare a challenge. The City of Eureka is going to find a way to help put food in people's mouths. I hope that the City of Arcata, the City of Fortuna, the County of Humboldt, the unincorporated area of McKinleyville, the City of Lolita, the City of Ferndale, the City of Trinidad, the City of Riodale, who am I forgetting? Every, Hoopa, thank you. I hope that every, every city, county, and tribal government in our immediate area finds a way to match this or make it better. We have a really supportive community, and we can help make sure that people in our family don't go hungry.
Nice job. Blue Lake is the other one.
Blue Lake, thank you. Blue Lake, okay. Especially you, Blue Lake Munkins.
All right, so we have, so we have a motion in a second. Are there any further comments? All right, please vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
I just want to shout out to the Time Standard, that's an above-the-fold challenge. Okay. So this moves us to item G4, Humboldt County Law Enforcement Mutual Aid Agreement. And that is with Chief Stevens, is he online? Welcome, chief.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. Can you hear me?
Yes, now we can.
All right. Good evening, everyone. Last year fall, in an event that the City of Eureka, Eureka Police Officers and numerous other law enforcement agencies were involved in, the Independent Police Auditor conducted a review of that event. And during the discussions thereafter with council and with the cop board, a conversation was had about a mutual aid agreement with all law enforcement agencies within the county. Taking that request to find or create a new mutual aid agreement, I was able to locate one from many years ago. I took that, reviewed it, made sure all the applicable laws that were on the old one were still in effect, and updated it, presented it to LICA, the Law Enforcement Chiefs Association of Humboldt, got the consent of LICA to move it forward within that organization, and brought forward the signatures. It is signed by all Humboldt County law enforcement, as far as the municipalities go, the sheriff's office, our tribal entities, Hoopa and Yurok, as well as the California Highway Patrol. The other federal and state agencies are in support of the mutual aid agreement. However, there's bureaucracy issues with them signing on to an MOU without it going through many different layers of review throughout the state or the federal government. So we know those partners are there to assist us if needed. It's just don't have signatures for them. I brought that mutual aid agreement back to the cop board after it was reviewed by the IPA. It was reviewed by the IPA prior to having the signatures done. And then taken it to the cop board during our last cop meeting, spoke with them about it. They appreciated the mutual aid agreement. Their only suggestion for me was the next time, we write it next year, is to update the words tribal entities or make some acknowledgement to the tribal entities that are signed on to the document, which I agreed to. And now I'm bringing it before council tonight to let you know that I followed through with the request to create a mutual aid agreement with all law enforcement agencies in the county that gives direction to each of us as we assist one another with any kind of mission or task that outweighs the amount of resources that we have within our own organizations. So I'm available for any questions council may have this evening.
Thank you. Do we have any questions for Chief? Councilmember Moulton?
Thank you. And thank you, Chief Stevens, for putting the effort into this. It was great to see all those signatures on there. Curious about mutual education opportunities. I love the fact that EPD has so many great opportunities for professional development, for our officers, and things like crisis management, de-escalation. Is there, okay, so I read the agreement. It doesn't seem like there was anything in there specifically about helping make sure that other officers, that our officers are working with, are equally trained. But is there opportunity for EPD to help share that knowledge that they have developed?
Yes, there, currently, we have a class going on, I believe it's early next month, that Commander LaFrance and Jacob Rosen are teaching. It's SB 43 and 5150 holds, it's a countywide class. It's been presented to LICA, or pushed out to LICA, so there will be attendees from all countywide agencies. It's really important because SB, I hope I got that right, SB 43 is a new law that's coming forward in January that talks about graved and disabled folks that could really impact our resources and especially our hospital if we were to place too many of those on a hold utilizing that part of the code. And then just writing more accurate 5150s, more thorough 5150s mental health holds to ensure that those that are making the decisions to either release them or send them for further treatment are getting the necessary information they need. So we're getting people in the right place, the right time, the first time, and hopefully not going through multiple iterations of having to take people on holds because the hold didn't contain the information that it's needed. So that's just one example. We also do our perishable skills training, a lot of times as a county. So those classes are put on at the College of the Redwoods. And all county agencies send officers to those classes. There's a chance to collaborate on such things as de-escalation, use of force, defensive tactics. So there are a lot of crossovers when we have some trainings. We also do, and it's in the works to work on, more civil disobedience training. So when we have the instructors, there's only one place that we know that does the instructors, and that's back in Alabama. So we've been working on getting people ready to go back to that to become in-house instructors. But the county does have instructors. And we're working on putting classes together with them in the California Highway Patrol. So we're all operating on the same page when we're dealing with some type of civil disobedience. So those are just a few examples that I know we're currently working on or that are currently in the process that show that collaboration among all law enforcement agencies.
That's great to hear. Thank you.
Councilmember Fernandez?
Thank you. So I, first, I really do appreciate the, the use and, and recommendations from our Citizen Oversight on Police Practices Board? Not a committee, right? Yeah. And, and chief, you had said that this was developed from a previous mutual aid agreement, and, and it's been brought up to date. You said that it, that you looked at the relevant government codes and that those are all up to date. Was, was any language amended or brought up to date as well?
Yeah, there was really no language changes involved in the mutual aid agreement as each entity, especially the major departments, looked at it and found it to be, it's simple, but it meets all the needs of these HR agencies to ensure that we can respond to and assist other agencies, but that we also put the priority on making sure we have the resources to police our own cities and who's in charge of those entities. So it's, it is a very simplistic mutual aid agreement because it can, you can account for every single possibility that's out there, but it does give us the direction we need as leaders of these agencies to come together and assist one another during especially large events.
And, and I do appreciate simplicity when it comes to MOUs, I really do. It just feels that, and I'll get to it in a moment, it feels that there are a few areas that may be lacking. For, for me, one of those areas is how is it determined that mutual aid is necessary? And, and how do we determine that if our officers arrive on scene that we don't feel that we're needed, much as was the case with, with the incident with Cal Poly last year?
Yeah, I would agree slightly with that. I think we were needed at Cal Poly. That agency was overrun with an issue that they did not have the personnel between them and Arcata, who's their nearest backup to deal with. And when they put out that request, that was made by their leadership. And so us necessarily having to be there, a necessity, yes, to try to help maintain that peace and figure out what was going to happen. So mutual aid are determined based on the incident, based on the resources that an agency has available to them at the time. I have called them back in the day when we've had large bar fights that, you know, we have five officers on and we have 100 people in the street. So it goes from anything like that to we sent officers to Arcata after an Arcata officer was shot during an incident on the plaza. So it, you know, there's a wide variety and trying to spell those out when they're needed is, is really hard. I mean, we, we commonly will assist agencies with canines when they have some type of incident that is unfolding quickly. We have a canine on duty or one that's on call that's closer than anything that they have available. And we'll send that canine officer to go and assist immediately with that call for service once it's evaluated by the on-duty watch commander and/or commander to make that call. So trying to outline all the needs or all the possibilities is really hard. So they are, it can be called by anybody within the agency that's in charge of the scene at the time, and they feel that the need for that mutual aid outweighs, you know, the resources they have. And if they don't get that mutual aid, then it is endangering life and safety and public and taking away their ability to do the job.
Okay, and then two more pieces for me is, I know you said that it would be very difficult to wade into this and try and determine, you know, any, any situation that might, might come up, and I'm not expecting that. For me, it's, it's more a concern of a lack of definitions in the document. And, and I can see a few, that's not saying that there aren't any. I mean, we have law enforcement, which refers to police agencies, Humboldt Operational Area, being Humboldt County. But it, it feels, again, without finding a better word, just lacking in that capacity. And then an issue of liability, which I don't see in here. And so that gives me pause for concern. Do you have any, any recommendations or thoughts on adding definitions or adding who assumes liability in the event of mutual, a request for mutual aid?
Yeah, I mean, I am open for discussion on, on parts of that. I think the liability issue may be something the city clerk and/or the city attorney may need to weigh on. However, that anytime we operate outside of our city with any type of assist, whether it's just in cutting for a call for service or we're covering for the sheriff's department for their event, or I send people to Mendocino County for a fire, our officers operate under our policy manual, operate under the rules governed to them by the City of Eureka. So any liability that we would incur out of the area is the same liability we would incur within the city, operating under our policies and regulations that we already do. We don't adopt somebody else's policies or change our policies to adapt to theirs. And the only time I could ever see that happening would be in a natural disaster when some type of declaration is made that would change our ability to, you know, work outside of our policy just because of the circumstances. But for the general mutual aid that we're doing, our officers are sent with the understanding they're operating under our mutual aid, whether it's working at the rodeo in Fortuna, covering a Fourth of July festival, or someone else working as part of the SWAT team, CNT team, MOU, they still operate under our, our policies. So it's, or an MOU signed by the city that shares that liability, just as it would for any other mutual aid.
Okay, and, and I appreciate that feedback on, on the liability when it comes to, to the action of officers, but I'm also thinking of the liability that if any of them are injured, if something were to occur. I don't know if that should be directed to city manager and city attorney, or if maybe you have an answer for that.
Well, the officers are doing their duties under the direction of the command of EPD, so therefore I think they would be covered. I know they would be covered under our workers' comp policy and any liability by our city. And ultimately it would fall back on me if there was an issue with an officer getting hurt. You know, I'm either myself, one of the commanders, or the final decision maker in sending them into an incident. And if that happened, then that's on me to answer for.
Councilmember, you're done. Castellano?
Thank you. Thank you for your work on this and for, you know, I think it's really significant just seeing all of the different bodies that have already signed it. I had a question, a couple of questions, let's see. I think, you know, in terms of the, the policy or the agreement, items four and five, I find kind of interesting. And, and so I just want to make sure, to me, they sort of offer, I don't know, like different sides of the scale in a way, in, in relationship to one another that- For, so for number four, basically that, you know, the jurisdiction requesting mutual aid shall remain in charge of the incident. And so that would mean that, you know, for instance, right? And, and I think many of us know that one of the reasons we brought this forward is because of the, the incident at Cal Poly Humboldt and just wanting to better understand that and, and kind of see what happened and what could, could have happened differently or- And so this is sort of, kind of, just to be clear on it, kind of just clarifying that in that, you know, an incident such as that, the university, if they called for the request, they would remain in charge of the incident. And so then, you know, the other side of it, number five, is that the integrity of the responding forces and policies and procedures of the departments will be upheld. So would that mean, from your opinion, you know, that, you know, let's say, and I'm, I'm not here to judge that incident in particular at this exact moment, but, you know, let's say you showed up at an incident and you actually didn't like the way, hypothetical, you didn't like the way, you didn't feel like the way that the requesting party was managing it was sound, you know? And again, not to throw accusations anywhere, you would retain the, the right to withdraw from that incident at that time and maintain your, your own, like, policies, you know, like the integrity of your policies and procedures. Is that sort of what's that saying?
Yeah, I think, I think there's a couple of things there. I think that, you know, I wouldn't want someone to come into the city when I call for a mutual aid assist and take over my scene just because they feel like they need to take over the city or they're sending more people than I have.
Yeah.
So that's kind of falls to the way number four reads, is that we're not taking away anyone's right to run an incident or their jurisdictional rights when we send mutual aid. Hypothetically, in a large-scale incident that wasn't going right when I arrived, one of my commanders arrived. I believe we would do much like we have in the past and set up a unified command with the law enforcement agency that's in charge and other leaders that show up to see how we could work through the incident, utilizing our experiences, our resources properly, and coming up with what the actual mission is and what the outcome we want for that night is. And that way, we're working together with the resources. We're all in charge of our own resources and we're all working toward one common goal. Now, if that wasn't agreed upon and the lives of officers and the public were not in immediate danger, then yes, we could agree to walk away and say this doesn't fit within the working parameters of the ethics of our department and we're not going to take part in this. The only caveat to that is if there are people actively being assaulted, whether it was the public in some type of incident among public members or the officers that were being assaulted, then that would have to be reevaluated just for the, you know, safety of life over everything else. And then determinations would be made at that time on how we move forward after that.
Thank you. And, you know, this, this agreement here is a shared agreement. And then do we already have an internal policy about mutual aid in terms of, you know, some of the questions I have that wouldn't necessarily be in a shared agreement would be, you know, like, review of mutual aid situations after the fact or, you know, and, and kind of assessment and things like that?
Yes, so we have requirements that if we are asked for mutual aid, we ask for certain information, where's your incident command post, how many people you need. Those, the person on duty, whether it's the watch commander, commander, makes a determination on how many people we have on duty, what's the need for us to maintain policing our city, and then we send what assistance we can. If we don't have the assistance, then we make the decision not to send the assistance. As far as if we call people into our city, we utilize the same thing. We give them what the incident is, where our incident command is. So there's direction when it comes to how it's called internally and how we respond to it internally as well.
Thank you. Councilmember Conchera Stiloch?
Hi, thank you, chief. I had a question, how does this, how does this differ from CERT, the Critical Incident Response Team that, that a lot of the people in the county are assigned on to?
Yeah, so CERT is an entity, a team, that responds to critical incidents after the fact. So the primary purpose of that team is to investigate officer-involved shootings, in custody deaths, and those kind of things. So there, this incident, a major incident, would already be over with by the time CERT was called in to conduct their investigation.
I didn't realize that. For some reason, I thought CERT included like just any big crime scene. So thank you for the clarification.
Absolutely, thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll open this item up for public comment. Is there anyone from the public here in chambers that would like to comment on this item? Seeing no one, we'll bring it over to Zoom. Is anybody on Zoom?
I see no one on Zoom.
Great, so we're going to close the public comment and bring it back to council for a motion and a vote.
It's a report.
This is a report. Can't forget, it's, I've been here a long time, it feels like.
What was on consent?
It's a great report, thank you. It does say action.
Because it was on consent.
Okay, generally when it's on consent, we do do the public comment and a vote. Okay, well, thank you. And on that note, I just wanted to say that, I was going to mention it when you had mentioned about all the trainings, that our own Sergeant LaFrance and Jacob Rosen were down in Santa Rosa today doing a training, because, that's right, we have rock stars here in Eureka, on a collaborative behavioral health bridge planning symposium. So, 400 people, so, super proud of them. This moves us to legislative action. All quiet. This moves us to ordinances, designation of local fire hazard severity zones with Chief Citro.
Good evening, mayor and council. Last meeting, I, we did the first reading of the Fire Hazard Severity Zone map ordinance. And now it's time for the second reading and hopefully adoption of the ordinance. I could redo my wonderful presentation for you again, but I think it was enough information for you. So I'm here to answer if there's any more questions you have before we go ahead.
Any questions for chief?
All right.
Okay, thank you.
Wonderful, thank you.
Seeing none, we'll open this item up for public comment. Would anyone from the public like to comment on this item? Seeing no one, do you see anybody on Zoom?
I see no one on Zoom.
We'll return it to council for a motion and a vote. Councilmember Fernandez?
I'll move to wave full reading, read by title only and adopt bill number 1048CS, an ordinance approving the local responsibility area Fire Hazard Severity Zone map as provided by the California Department of Forestry and Fire Protection.
Second. Motion in a second, please vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
Thank you. This moves us to reports and action items. Modification to SEPTED facade improvement rebate program. And I know that she, she was here just a moment ago. Be just a moment. So we are going to go ahead and take a five, six, seven break. We're going to reconvene this November 18th city council meeting with a report, modification to the SEPTED facade improvement rebate program with Economic Development Director Asbury.
Hi, everyone. We are here to talk about SEPTED. So let's start with explaining what SEPTED is. So SEPTED is Crime Prevention Through Environmental Design. And this started, our program started in, I think, 2019, but this started before that with our former police chief, Steve Watson. So he had some SEPTED consultants come and give a two-day training to staff across all the different departments. And in that training, we learned about the four different SEPTED principles. So the first one is natural surveillance, which is like you want to see and be seen. So when we're talking to folks about that, that's cameras and lighting and changes to landscapes, like trimming bushes that are tall or short. Natural access control is about like fences or how people walk through a property, kind of guiding them through certain areas or keeping them away from certain areas. So that's like fencing and gates. Territorial reinforcement is defining where people go from the public space into the private space. They behave differently when they realize they're on private property. So that can be done through signage or landscaping, fencing. And then maintenance, when a space is cared for, people behave differently. So after we went through this program, or this training, we decided to create a program that would incentivize property owners to implement these suggestions. And so we came up with this program, it's a grant program, it's a reimbursement program, and there's two sides to it. So the first side is the SEPTED reimbursement program. So that, we reimburse folks 100% up to $2,500. And I want to clarify, this is for commercial properties, not residential, and property owners or businesses have been able to apply. So the first half of the program is the SEPTED half, where you can do the 100% up to $2,500. We didn't just want to encourage security improvements, we also wanted to encourage exterior beautification improvements. So we also did a facade improvement part where we would reimburse 25% up to $2,500. So that means if somebody spends 10 grand, then they'll get the $2,500 grant. So that's like exterior painting, awning, signage, stuff like that. So the way that the program works is they have to, the very first thing that they do is they have a site visit from our SEPTED team. And I think that's really where this program has been valuable, is the SEPTED team. So it's somebody from every department. So we have somebody from EPD, it's usually Chief Stevens or one of the captains. We have our chief building official, somebody from building, our senior planner, Kaitlin Castellano, Matt Morgan from Code Enforcement, Robin Prosser from Community Services, specifically if there's a dumpster issue. And then sometimes Recollege you will also attend, and then our Economic Development Team. And so we show up for half an hour, we do four of these a month. And we just hang out outside and we talk about what issues they're dealing with. This isn't a gotcha, we're not there to look for issues or code violations or anything like that. It's just to hear what issues people are dealing with and to brainstorm solutions together. So maybe it's like, hey, I think you should put a light right here, and this is the- So maybe it's like, hey, I think you should put a light right here, and this is the permit you're going to need, and if you might have to go to historic preservation, or if you do it this way, you won't need a building permit. So we're just able to kind of resolve issues with the property owner while we're there. Then the property owner decides what they're going to do, and I work with them to make sure they get all the approvals that they need, and then they make their improvements, and then they apply for reimbursement. So since we started this program, we've had about 90 site visits, we have issued 37 grants awarded, we've given out grants for a total of $148,000. We have been budgeted $165,000 in different pieces here and there, so right now we have a current budget of about $17,000 in the program. So I would like to propose two changes. This program, it was slow to get going, and then, the more we've done it, the more it's taken off, and what happens is you have businesses recommending it to each other, like there's the Old Town Instagram chat group, and they will recommend to each other, like, oh, you should reach out about SEPTED from the city and do this program. So it has taken off, and there is more interest in it. And to be able to keep this going, we want to make sure that it's sustainable, and there's a couple pitfalls that we've found as we've been doing this over the years. So the first one is, we'd like to establish a 5,000 per parcel cap. So right now, we've been letting businesses stack the grants, so I have an example. This building, the professional building at the corner of Seventh and I, a bunch of the businesses in this stacked the grants, the issue they were having was people coming and sleeping in this entryway, and so they stacked the grants to put up that fence and to install a camera system that they can all log into and do together. However, with the popularity of the program, we've had some really big applications. So we just recently paid one property owner $25,000. And so, to make this be able to be spread farther, we'd like to do a max of 5,000 per parcel cap. The other change we'd like to make is to reinstate the building permits and planning review fees, this is pretty minor, we haven't waived that much, it's been a couple thousand dollars, but it really isn't an obstacle when people are pursuing this, they're not dissuaded by those fees. Instead, what's happening is, like, there's a handful of people that have found this as a loophole, and so they're pursuing this program to get around this, and so that's not the intent of the program. And so we would just, you know, our staff evaluates those fees annually, it's based on staff time and resources, and to just make this sustainable and, and not have one department carry the burden, it just seems like a reasonable change to make right now. So, those are my proposed changes, I have some suggested most in language, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Questions?
I was just going to make a motion, so I can wait.
Okay, so, no quest, council member Fernandez?
You had said that the fees, so far waived, have maybe been around 1,000 or a few thousand?
A couple thousand. I asked Brendan Riley, and he didn't think it was that big of a deal, his guess was a couple grand in total.
Since the start of the program, or just in this last year?
Just in the last year, okay.
And, and so then, do you think that this would be prohibitive for some of the folks? Because, you know, 25,000 versus 5,000 goes a long way depending on the property and the project, so that's why I'm curious, like, how prohibitive, if at all?
I mean, when we first were designing this, the idea was that we didn't want the grant to go towards the fees, like, we didn't want to be paying ourselves. I'd say a lot of the improvements that people are making that qualify for this grant are pretty small, it's like cameras, gates, exterior lights, those are like the accordion gates, there's like frequent things that we offer repetitively, it's pretty common, a lot of the changes. There are some bigger projects that fall under this, especially under the exterior beautification, the facade, so like, doing massive renovations, and that really does trigger, like, the review fees and stuff like that.
Some of those, like cameras, we don't charge a building permit fee if they're just putting cameras up there.
Yeah.
So some of those things that she listed, we don't even have a permit fee for.
Thinking about the facade improvements, then, would, would it be, might you consider, then, like, having two different tiers, one that are just like those cameras, those scissor gates, and then maybe something a bit more for those that do need that facade improvement? Is there any consideration given to that, or?
There hasn't been. What I notice is, people that are grumpy about the fees are pursuing this. It's, the fees aren't the issue, it's not the people going through the program naturally through having an issue and getting it resolved, it's more of becoming a loophole that people are pursuing. That's not really worth the, the juice isn't worth the squeeze.
Okay.
And I'll say that when we had this interim break, when we were trying to figure out how to make this more sustainable, people were still taking advantage of the opportunity to have people come and evaluate their property, that in and of itself is, is pretty valuable.
And do we charge for that?
We don't charge for that, and I will say, the reaction from doing that, you just see people's frustration levels drop throughout that half an hour, they're shocked that eight people are there to listen to them, and it also, when we leave, the ball's in their court. So like, we've done over 90 site visits, but only 37 people have submitted grants. And I, I think that there's value in that as well, and I've also, I've presented this program at the state California Association of Local Economic Development, and other jurisdictions are imitating this program and are picking it up, and it's interesting, other jurisdictions will call me and they can't get all their departments to agree to this. So I think that it is rare that ours are willing to do this, and, and that's where the value is, is people enjoy, or not enjoy, but appreciate have, being heard.
Yeah, it's good to hear, too, just, just anecdotally, that this, at, at a minimum, they're able to get at least a recommendation of here's what might help, you don't have to go through the city, but there's a grant there, so, thank you.
Any further questions? Seeing none, we'll open this item up for public comment, is there anyone in chambers that would like to comment on this item? Seeing no one, I'm going to go over to Zoom.
I see no one on Zoom.
Great, we'll close the public comment and bring it back to council for a motion and discussion. Counsel member Castellano?
Firstly, thank you for all of your work on the SEPTED program, you know, having been able to attend a couple of the community meetings, I can definitely just speak to how much people appreciate it, and also how much care and sensitivity you bring to the meetings you have with community members, so just thank you for your leadership there. And with that, I move to approve the proposed updates to the SEPTED facade improvement rebate program.
Second?
We have a motion and a second, any further comments? Counsel member Conchera Stiloch?
Yeah, I just wanted to echo what council member Castellano said, I, I think this is a great thing that we do in our community, and I've sent businesses that direction. And I, I just think it's, it's, it's fantastic, and it's unique, and it shows how responsive the city really wants to be towards helping people with whatever their challenges are, and, and helping them succeed with their businesses, so, thank you, I appreciate it.
Great, was that an Alan Workman photo? Yes. Amazing. Okay, well, with that, we have a motion and a second, please vote.
Five yes votes, motion carries.
And before we move on, it's been brought to my attention that there's an event happening tomorrow, if I can get it big enough to see, the blue envelope rollout, starting tomorrow at 1:00 to 3:00, this is through the police department, and I can't make it bigger, so...
Warfinger.
It's at the Warfinger? I got that, 1:00 to 3:00, but what is?
I have it pulled up here, mayor.
Here it is, pick up blue envelopes and, go ahead, council member Moulton.
Thank you, the blue envelope program is for, it's a big envelope that you put all of the stuff you might need in when you get stopped by the police in traffic, and it's specifically for folks who might have communication challenges, so that they can clearly communicate with the officer, and they, the officer can understand that this is a person that might have a hearing challenge or another kind of communication challenge, and this is just to keep communication lines open and keep everybody safe, and to make sure that, you know, a traffic stop doesn't turn into a misunderstanding. So, the, the blue envelope, and it's, you know, it'd be handy for everybody to have, put all your stuff in the envelope and have it there easy, easy access. It also has instructions on it for folks what to do when you are pulled over. Anybody can go and pick them up at the Warfinger Building tomorrow, Wednesday, November 19th, from 1:00 to 3:00, or you can call the EPD or talk to Laura Montagna over there, and if you have any questions. That's a part of the Redwood Coast Regional Center, is where, has worked with them to develop this and implement this. Oh, there it goes, thank you.
Thank you so much. I can, I can see that, I can't see it on my phone for some reason. So, that's happening tomorrow, so if you're interested, certainly get on down there. All right, future agenda items. Seeing none, we're going to move to a brief city manager report about city grocery stores.
Thank you, mayor, and good evening, mayor and council. At this year's strategic visioning, one of the items that was brought up is the potential for the city to operate a grocery store. The main location that was discussed was in Henderson Center at the old Rite Aid that is currently there, so, staff reached out to the property owner, Ms. Slack, Ms. Slack has had the same idea as council of having a grocery store there. Unfortunately, Food Mart used to be there, Food Mart was bought by Safeway, and when Safeway sold that property, they put a deed restriction on it that they would not be able to have any commercial facility that had more than 30% grocery in it. And so that's where Rite Aid would qualify, but a grocery store would not qualify. They are in, I believe, the 23rd year of that 51 years, they are working with their attorney to try and discuss a potential way out of that agreement, it hasn't been successful in the past. We also discussed whether or not they'd be interested in selling the property, and they were not. So, just an update on other potential locations that may be coming, not necessarily from the city, but there has been discussion in the community, they haven't come into staff to, to a development review or anything like that, but there is discussion that there's going to be a proposal for a market down in Old Town, adjacent to the Ramones down in Old Town. We haven't received any development plans for that or anything yet, but there has been people in the community discussing that that is potentially going to happen. But, staff will continue to look at areas and try and concentrate on area where there is, there is a deficit of it, but just wanted to provide that update to council that, that's the situation with the Rite Aid property.
Great, thank you. Any questions for city manager Slattery? Yeah, sure. Council member Moulton?
Just a quick comment, I wanted to say that I appreciate the fact that staff will continue to look for areas where there is deficit, we're going to be adding a lot of density into Eureka in the next several years, and folks are going to need affordable food, hopefully within walking distance.
Great, thank you. So with that, we are going to adjourn open session and head back into closed session.